Yep. A little bit bigger of a track.
Is it what?
Bigger.
Thank you. So far away.
Bigger. (laughing).
Hey, how's it going?
(inaudible).
Transition.
Yeah.
Um, what the council is to do is how we, uh, by we.
Yeah. What if I'm?
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Oh, my face.
We got all three lists between us.
No, no. I thought I was like the right-hand man. I was moving up the level. No, we need a resolution for that. Whatever. Sod. I have pretty much growing my own grass.
Who was that about?
The sod. Did you get this one on? Who was complaining about it?
Both project people.
Project people.
They can't get it at all or? Well, let's see, let's see what. I did, my turn.
Hello, Michael. How are you?
Thank you.
Educated guests.
B six B and the public hearing.
Counselor, they're running on to Adrian.
My ears before.
Big up here.
I actually heard.
We got enough gas early. Look at the gas early.
No, go ahead.
All right. Everybody ready? All right, we're ready whenever you are back there. There we go. Welcome everyone to the Shakopee, September 3rd, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Beckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Counselor Clay.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on. Item number three A, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. McNeil.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have two items to add. Six B, it was properly noticed that we need to hold a public hearing tonight to consider actions relating to the violation of an alcohol license by Magnum Management Corporation doing businesses Valley Fair. That again will be a public hearing. And we also would like to add ten C one, which will be an update from the Public Works Director regarding sod availability for the 2013 street reconstruction project.
All right. Counselor Lehman.
Ten, the addition of a public hearing? We're having the public hearing tonight?
The public hearing was advertised, Counselor. It just did not get on the agenda.
Okay.
Counselor Whiting.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second? Same, Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, item number three A, appointment of interim city council person, Patrick Heitzman. Mr. McNeil.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, with the resignation of Pamela Sherman as council member, a vacancy has existed since midnight last Sunday. Last month, you gave consideration to how to fill that, and the consensus at that point was the interim council member would be Patrick Heitzman. He would serve until January 1st. You need to take official action to do that, however. There is a resolution number seventy-three fifty-one that was contained in your packet. Action should be considered on that tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone have, uh, Counselor Lehman?
Offer resolution seventy-three fifty-one.
Second.
Same, Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to one. Um, we are going to welcome Pat Heitzman up here. Do we, do we have like a song to play for him or anything?
No, I don't know.
He's gonna get sworn in.
He does need to get sworn in. We're gonna have to find the swearing-in thing.
Uh-oh.
Uh, we used to have someone who had that memorized, and unfortunately she retired, so let us get that. In the meantime, uh, let's continue on with that.
I'm sorry, what are we missing?
We need to swear in.
Okay.
Do you have a?
We're gonna have to defer to the city clerk. Hi. We need an oath of office. Could you find that for us and let us know?
So should I go sit?
Hold on, let me see.
Why don't we do the agenda in the meantime?
All right.
Come back, sorry.
Sorry, Pat. You can, you can sit up here, but you can't vote. All right, we're gonna move on. Item number four, consent business. Uh, any items to remove from consent agenda? Um, I would like to remove, uh, sorry, I lost which number it was. Uh, four F four from consent. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda as amended.
So move.
Counselor Whiting, do we have a second?
Second.
Same, Counselor Lehman. Mr. McNeil.
Thank you. Four A one approves ascending of a letter of concurrence to the Federal Transit Administration designated the Metropolitan Council as the direct recipient of section fifty-three oh seven federal transit formula funds from the seventh county of Minneapolis-St. Paul Metropolitan Region. Four A two approves supporting further discussions with the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority regarding transit service consolidation and/or cooperation for possible bus service to Shakopee. Four B one adopts resolution number seventy-three forty-eight, which renews a joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and the state of Minnesota. Four B two declares several bicycles and other miscellaneous property held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes proper sale or disposal of these items. Four B three declares two forfeited vehicles held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes properly, uh, sale or disposal. Four C one approves the suspension of city code regarding noise elimination, noise prevention, and hourly restrictions for certain operations for work by Northwest Asphalt, Inc. on the Valley Park Business Center Public Improvements Project. Four C two approves the same consideration for hours for noise for estimate of hinges and suns for work to be done on the County Road Seventeen Public Improvements Project. Four C three adopts resolution number seventy-three forty-four rejecting all bids for the East Shakopee Industrial Sewer Improvements Project number two thousand thirteen dash four. Four C four authorizes appropriate city officials to execute an extension agreement with WSB and Associates, Inc. for MS four storm water pollution prevention program updated across not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars to be paid from storm drainage funds. Four E one adopts resolution number seventy-three fifty-two accepting a donation of one thousand dollars from Home Choice for use at Enigma Teen Center. Four F one approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of one million four hundred forty-three thousand thirty dollars and twenty-two cents. Four F two approves minutes of the August 7th and August 20th, two thousand thirteen city council meetings. Four F three approves the application and grants massage therapist license to Alana Rosenthal, and four F four was removed from consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, we are going to have a swearing-in of Mr. Heitzman. Now Counselor, uh, Clay can sing again. No? Diarrheiculitis stops that?
I'm gonna speed things up.
All right.
And I haven't had a chance to warm up my voice. Did we even do anything?
Raise your right hand.
Congratulations.
I, Patrick Heitzman, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Justly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of council member of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota.
Of council member of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, welcome, sir. I'm sorry you missed out on that thrilling consent agenda there. Uh, moving on, item number five, uh, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there tonight who'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Would that be me if I just signed in the five minutes that you guys say you have?
Uh, is it for an item that's not on the agenda? Well, then that is you. Yeah, please come up.
All right. I've already signed in. My name's Bill Iverson, and I live at eighteen forty-five Countryside Drive. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for your hard work the last couple of years. I know there's election coming up, but one of the things that, the subject I have is, uh, rules and guidelines. Um, in the beginning, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, two weeks after the election, I, uh, seen the mayor on TV inviting the Vikings to Shakopee, and I, I never in all the meetings that I watched, uh, seen any discussion or anything that happened without a fact. It kinda was alarming. It was like the city council didn't know what happened. Um, another thing, a trip to California with governor, uh, asking reimbursement after the fact, which was kind of alarming. Um, votes seemed to be three to two, three to two, three to two, three to two, over and over again, and, um, some of my friends had seen the same people that go three to two, three to two, eating out at a restaurant together after the meeting, which from some of my friends that have been doing it for thirty years said, "You can't do that." Promising jobs, supposedly state rules say you can't promise jobs, uh, to specific for Shakopee residents. Um, are there supposed to be five council members? Um, would help if the mayor, you know, helped from putting him in the spot of being the swing vote. Uh, the raises piece, the last few weeks has kinda been a big topic to me, and that, uh, it seems that a lot of the city employees get one and two percent raises, and, uh, the mayor position all of a sudden pretty much doubled their salary, which was rather alarming when everybody else gets one, two percent, and, uh, other, uh, communities seem to be at around ten thousand for that same job. Time put in at city council, I know a lot of you guys put in a lot of time, but, uh, in my nine years, uh, being in the community, I've seen, uh, volunteers offer hundreds and hundreds of hours of their time in the school system, in the community, in the athletic clubs. I mean, some of these parents, it's over the top. They're just awesome, and they all seem to wanna give parts of their life to the community, and I just, I really, it, that's, that's what makes the city real attractive, is everybody wants to, you know, get in the game. Um, when I look at all this, it, a lot of it seems real confusing as a citizen, and one thing that brings me, that grounds me, is I keep going back to the mission statement with Shakopee. When things get real confusing and it don't make sense, I go back to the, the mission statement, and I keep going back to the mission statement, and some of it, uh, being a small-town atmosphere, it, I, I'm seeing the trend that we're losing, that we're trying to be like Minneapolis, or we're trying to be, you know, like the big city where I came from. Um, and this town has a, a small-town feel, and it, it, it's really important to me as a resident of Shakopee. Uh, abatements, um, it seems that we're giving the house away. Uh, it seems that a lot of these companies, from what I understand, um, they don't need the money, but we seem to have an open, uh, view of, you know, in order to get a company here, it isn't about a business relationship, a handshake, playing golf together and say, "Hey, man, bring your business here." It's, it's about giving something up when they don't even need it. Um, I'm kinda all over the board here, but it just, this is watching you guys. I just, it's just, there's so many things happening that it's just really, as a resident, it's confusing me big time.
Well, Mr. Iverson, you've got one minute left.
Okay, one minute. The Dennis Building that's going in, awesome, they're doing it, but they're putting the building in backwards. I looked at the blueprints, and the building's being put in backwards to one oh one, which is like, what was that, you know? Uh, pet store issues, when you guys are talking about the pet store and the issues with the pet store, I went on the internet in five minutes, I found a state statute that talks about it has to be clean, and there's a, it's a misdemeanor if you don't keep it clean. So with that, I'll, I'm done, but thanks for all, everything you guys do, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we are going to, item number six A, public hearing for issuance of solid waste revenue bonds for Recovery Technology Solutions. Entertain a motion to open public hearing? Counselor Whiting?
Up, move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Same, Counselor Clay. What was that? Counselor Lehman?
Do we have, uh, the stuff that was removed from the consent agenda?
Uh, we're not there yet.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Maggio. Sorry, we didn't. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Ms. Maggio.
Hi, good evening. Tonight I'd ask you to open the public hearing and continue it until October 1st, 2013. I've been in talks with Julie Eddington, our counsel. She informed me that unfortunately, at this time, the company is not ready to move forward with their bonds. They need more time to finalize the terms and the structure of their bonds, and they need to work on additional bond documentation. So tonight my request to you is that we open the public hearing and we continue it until October 1st, 2013. On that night, I'm hoping that Ms. Eddington will be here to discuss the bond terms with us, and that we could also have some of the owners of RTS here to answer questions from the public and from you.
Which day will continue to?
October 1st.
October 1st.
Twenty thirteen.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm really concerned about this proposal. I don't know where it came from and why we're involved in it. I don't know why the city would be a bank for private business, especially in the tune of seventeen million dollars, without even seeing any kind of information about this company, their, their history, their profit-loss statement over the last couple of years, nothing. So, and I don't understand how we being at the bank financing this, if they aren't successful, how that doesn't fall on the taxpayers of Shakopee.
Do you want me to answer this tonight, or do you wanna wait until the first?
No, we're gonna, we're not gonna get into heavy discussion about this tonight, and then have it again on the first. Um, we'll, uh, have the discussions that we need to about it on October 1st. Counselor Heitzman?
Uh, in the meantime, could you check out as far as that company? I'm not sure if they're in existence right now, or companies similar, as far as what kind of impact they have on, uh, water supply and everything like that, 'cause having all that asphalt laying around out there could be a problem.
Well, that's one, one thing I'd like them to come here and to address with you, because it's my understanding that this is a startup company, that, so some of this stuff, I think, is kind of unknown, but I think it's important to them to find out, what have you done so far? What do you know about this process? Where are you getting this process from? I think we have a lot of questions for the company, and I'll make sure that they're here on the first.
Thank you. So, uh, Counselor Clay?
Move to continue the public hearing to October 1st, 2013.
Second.
Same, Counselor Whiting.
Probably also ask if there's anyone in the audience who wants to hear tonight.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience, can I do this now? Or, or anyone in the audience would like to be heard on this item tonight? We're not gonna have any heavy discussion about it. Thanks, Mr. McNeil. Any discussion on the motion on the table, continue to October 1st. Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number six B is, uh, a new on the agenda. Chief Tate? Uh, we need to open the public hearing first, sorry. Entertainer motion, Counselor Lehman?
Motion, open a public hearing.
Second.
Same, Counselor Heitzman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Chief Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a public hearing to consider an alcohol violation for Magnum Management Corporation, uh, doing businesses Valley Fair. On October 6th, 2012, Valley Fair failed an alcohol compliance check conducted by the police department. On May 23rd, 2013, the seller pled guilty to selling alcohol to a minor. This is Valley Fair's second violation within a three-year period of time. Valley Fair acknowledged the, uh, a violation of selling to an underage individual on June 17th, 2010. The city council imposed a one thousand dollar fine and suspended their license for one day, although one-half of that fine and the one-day suspension was stayed, as they had no violations, uh, for a one-year period after that date. As this is their second violation within three years, the city code calls for a penalty of one thousand five hundred dollar fine and a five-day suspension of their license. Representatives from Valley Fair are here, and I'm told they do wish to address the council and answer any questions.
Counselor Lehman?
Chief, refresh my memory when we draft the dis, which was a couple of councils ago, but do we waive any of the five days on a second offense?
Under city code, no. It's only the first offense.
Okay.
Any other questions? Aye.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I was just here to speak on behalf of Valley Fair. Um, the notice that we received stated that we should either sign a form and admit to the fifteen hundred dollar fine and a five-day suspension, or come to the council meeting and request a hearing. My understanding is that I believe this is the hearing. Um, so we will move forward. The, uh, comments that I'd like to make with regards to Valley Fair on the liquor violation, um, myself, as the general manager, took my position last year at the beginning of the season. Um, once we found out about this violation, we take them very seriously. Um, through the course of last summer, there are no members of the Food Service Department, um, at Valley Fair in the same positions. Most of them are not with the company anymore. Um, our training has improved. Um, we do internal audits. Um, we take alcohol safe, you know, serving very seriously. Um, so with regards to this, not knowing all the rules and the regulations for requesting a hearing on, on waiving our rights with, you know, the fines, the suspension of our license, um, I came here to find out what our options are. Um, obviously, our point would be not to have any fines or, or suspensions, but I understand that, you know, we, we're wrong. Um, we deserve, you know, what you think would be fair, and so I'm just asking, you know, what would be fair in that regard. Obviously, the, the fine, I understand. The suspension of the five-day, uh, of our license for five days, you know, what are our options for that? Right now, we are open through the end of October. We're just open weekends through September right now. Um, we do have catering events and commitments that, um, clients are expecting to be able to have, uh, beer served at their event. Um, so if we fall through with the fifteen hundred dollar fine, the five-day suspension, are there any options for the five-day suspension? Do they have to be served immediately after this hearing? Um, can they be postponed till 2014 season? And I'm just asking for our options on, on what you declare to be fair, but also realizing, you know, we do take it seriously. We do understand that we're at fault, and we do understand that there needs to be penalties and fairness, you know, applied to all businesses in this area. Um, we're just looking for what our options are and how we can best serve the interests of the community. So that is all I have to say at this time. Any questions?
Counselor Whiting?
Sir, I, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Dave Fraser?
Dave. Um, what, how intensive is your training for your employees?
Can I bring up, uh, Frank Padilla, our director of food service?
Absolutely.
Who can go through it, but also go through the training and let you know that, um, our internal audits, we send people out with IDs that don't match their person or of age, and if, you know, for any reason they were to fail those audits, they are terminated. I mean, but we go through everything in the training. I'll let Mr. Padilla address the training.
Uh, thank you, Counsel, for the time. Uh, we have one of our full-time managers, uh, TIPS certified. Uh, then we use him to train the rest of the staff, anybody that's in the position to potentially serve alcohol.
What certified was that?
TIPS.
What, I don't know what that is.
It's an online course that, um, that's available for most, uh, restaurant operators. Uh, it's, uh, he's not a certified trainer. He's just, you know, he himself certified on the TIPS program. Um, the training is a one-on-one session with everybody over eighteen. It's conducted twice during the summer, uh, and, and we have, uh, one of the things that we did this year is, uh, we have on file those training sessions. The biggest improvement that we took going into this year after what happened last year, our, our terminals' point-of-sale system now require, uh, for us to type in a, a, a date, uh, similar to what you will find on common liquor stores. That's something that Valley Fair then had before, and I feel that that's a big part why this summer, when, uh, the police came to our property, we actually were able to pass that. We took the guessing from our employees, trying to calculate on their heads what the dates are. Now they have to manually punch in the date, otherwise the transaction does not come through. Um, we, like Dave already mentioned, the internal audits, it's a big thing that we did as well, uh, this year.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for Chief Tate.
Go ahead.
Any, any other questions for us?
Uh, oh, Counselor Lehman, yes.
See, I just have a comment. The comment would be that while I feel that Valley Fair is a great asset in our community, the conundrum that you put us in is that if we're gonna deviate from our policy for you, now we have to deviate for anybody that asks, and that's the whole reason that we adopted the ordinance that we have, because it became a all-night, whose argument is the best argument, conundrum, and, and, you know, I understand the position you're in. I can respect your position. Um, and you are an asset to Shakopee, but, um, it's, it's really hard to put us in a position to try to deviate between various businesses and stuff. I do have a, a question, technical question, that I'm gonna ask later with our attorney and our staff.
No, I, I mean, I understand the, the situation, and, and that's why I respect your decision, whatever it may be. Um, I just wanted to let you know that we take it seriously. Um, it's not something that we just, you know, pay the money. We, you know, we can afford a fifteen hundred dollar fine and move on. It's, it's not that situation at all, and I just wanna make sure you understand that.
Thank you. You have a question for the chief?
I do. Mayor, the, uh,
Go for it.
Might be more directed toward the attorney, but if we had a, a similar situation as we have tonight with a, you know, a bar slash social center that, I guess my question is, does it apply to the general sales and not the pre-scheduled, a month ago wedding party that's renting out the social center part of it? Or how exactly, or is the wedding that was scheduled a month ago just too bad, too sad?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the, uh, if their license is suspended, they can't serve, uh, they can't serve under their liquor license. Whether they could get a caterer or something else, um, I can't comment on that, but, but Valley Fair could not serve liquor under their liquor license if it's suspended during the time period of that event.
And the same would apply to any other venue?
Yes, and the same applies to any other venue.
Counselor Whiting?
I have a question for the chief or the, uh, our attorney here. Um, under, uh, seven B of our ordinance, uh, number, uh, or seven C, I'm sorry, it says, uh, "Multiple-day license suspension shall run consecutively, beginning at twelve oh one on the first day of the suspension period and ending midnight on the last day of the sus- suspension period." Now, Valley Fair isn't open on a full-time basis right now, so would that mean two weekends in, in, in this situation in this time, in their schedule?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that would be my interpretation of it. Um, it would be the suspension period that you, uh, decide. So, I, I've, I see nothing, and, uh, Mr. Thompson might disagree, but I've seen nothing in our city code that wouldn't allow you to, uh, defer the suspension to the 2014 season where it's five consecutive days. It just has to be consecutive, so it could be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then the next weekend, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Lehman?
What would stop us from making it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday?
Councilman Lehman, they're not open anymore on Mondays and Tuesdays in the fall, I don't believe.
It's not necessarily our fault.
Mr. McNeil?
I can recall a situation where we had a prior applicant, or prior offender, who had scheduled a day that they were closed and wanted to have the suspension valid that day. That did not correspond with either the letter or the spirit of the law, so that's something we probably want to be very concerned about.
Ask me when they're open.
Correct.
All right, so my question on this one is that have we ever had to enforce this ordinance? Have we ever enforced this ordinance on an entity such as Valley Fair? Another large entity that has multiple points of service all throughout a property? Have we utilized it on someone like that previously? Or has it all been just a single location?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we check everybody. So in terms of two violations within three years, I can't recall.
Raceway part?
Raceway. We've had tobacco violations at a few places that are not open Monday through Friday every single day, but nothing, nothing like this.
Okay.
With alcohol that I can remember.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, if I understand your question correctly, it's in addition to what the chief does suggest or answered, is, I think Valley Fair liquor license is somewhat unique in the sense that it, there's one license for the whole. Is that, I'm not sure, is that, are there individual licenses or not?
There currently, there is one license, but in the last three years, you've held two, correct?
You can come up and, you can come up and answer that, if you'd like.
Valley Fair right now holds four malt, three, two individual licenses, and then we, on-premises intoxicating beverages for the entire water park. So we have a total of five licenses.
Okay.
So the intoxicating liquor licenses, that's the one we're talking about here?
No, the offense happened at one of our three, two malt liquor licenses. Both of them did.
So are we just talking about suspending that license for five days, or all licenses for five days? Dave, could you come up to them?
We do have five licenses at this time. We went to the state representative's house, and we gained the opportunity to work with the city of Shakopee to have only one liquor license. But we are in the process. We figured we'd get through this season, work with the city on going to one liquor license instead of holding five.
You have to take separate action on that before next season-
Okay.
-to enact that, but it's been approved by the legislature.
All right, so I guess, Senator Whiting?
No, I'm confused. Which liquor license, are we gonna suspend all five, or are we gonna suspend one?
Do we need to table this to gain the answer? Mr. Thompson?
Chief, if you're gonna, the purpose of the hearing tonight is really, the main purpose is to determine whether or not you admit or deny the violation. From what I heard them say, they admit that the violation occurred, and they're just questioning the penalty. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Then, that being the case, my suggestion would be is you can, when we're done, we can close the hearing. I do think we should direct this back to staff and me to take a look at, to determine exactly which license is to be suspended. Because the penalty in the code is mandatory. And when, the time the council enacted this, there was discussion of, do we wanna have a mandatory penalty? Do we wanna have discretion? And the council said, no, we do not wanna give ourselves any discretion. These are mandatory penalties. So the amount of the penalty is fixed. The time period is, can be switched around, but I need to make sure we know which license we're suspending here. So I would need to the next council meeting to do that.
Okay, so at this time, we, I don't have-
Just make sure there's nobody else that wants to be heard.
You'll have to introduce yourself again, Mr. Iverson. You don't need to write it down.
I got a whole, lot of close friends that are servers that serve alcohol that have had to deal with the things that you're talking about with these gentlemen. And I believe in Bloomington, it's like 3,000 bucks for, if a server gets caught serving to a minor. And each of the servers, I believe in Bloomington, have to apply for a license. So it shifts a little bit of the burden to the server and that, and their accountability, so it's not just the business owners. So what I'm kinda getting at is maybe, you know, the city needs to relook how they are handling that piece and that, 'cause I know in Bloomington, the servers that work there and that, it's no joke, and you know, you get busted, it's three grand. And it's, you know, it just kinda shifts the burden where everybody can't just stand back. You've really gotta look at, what are you trying to prevent? And different cities kinda take a different look, and maybe you guys might wanna look at all the different cities and how they handle things.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe what the gentleman's referring to is, is the, there is a criminal penalty against the person who sells. And that's a misdemeanor, and it's punishable up to $3,000. The person who made, who made the sale here was punished. They went to court. I don't know what the fine was, but they were punished. And now, the question before the city council is the administrative penalty on the license itself, not on the server. So even in Shakopee, the servers do get a penalty for selling to a minor.
So we don't need to table the public hearing?
I don't, the question is for the city attorney, do we need to continue the public hearing? Is there a reason they can't close it tonight?
Mr. Mayor, no, you can close it. Once you get all the testimony, you can close the hearing. We can acknowledge that the violation, they've admitted the violation, and direct staff to come back at the next council meeting for the appropriate action.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jordan Olson. I live at 249 Mound Street. I just want to kind of point out that Valley Fair said they have five liquor licenses, but only one of them appears to have been violated. Wouldn't it be kinda practical to just do the one license? I mean, if they only violated one license, then just take that one away, why all five of them?
Thank you, sir. That's what we're trying to figure out if we can or not, and Mr. Thompson's gonna come back in the next meeting with that.
I think it'd be a great idea, too, if you had Mr. Thompson look at it. I mean, if nobody really knows the rules, we probably should find out what they are, huh?
Thank you. All right, after that fun stuff. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right, entertainer motion to close the public hearing. Councilor Clay?
Move to close the hearing.
Do we have a second? Senator Whiting?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Now, we need to, a motion, if we so choose, direct staff to further look at the license issue. Need a motion, and, Councilor Clay?
Move direct staff to research the license issue and determine whether we have the five-day suspension going to all five licenses, or just one, or some combination of those.
Second. Senator Heitzman, any discussion? Senator Lehman?
Yeah, do we, do we need to be accepting that their admittance to the incident at all?
Mr. Mayor, no, they stated that on the record. That's good enough.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. See you guys clear as to what's going on? Mr. Thompson, Mr. McNeil will follow up with you after.
We'll see you back at the meeting of September 17th.
September 17th, okay, very good. Thank you. All right, item number seven, business group from consent agenda, item number four, F4. I pulled that one because I would, that is, accepting the resignation of Mr. Ryan Love from the EDAC. And then, holding it open, I think, is what?
The recommendation was to hold it until February, when we do all of the boards and commissions, reappointments. This one is open. It is otherwise valid through the end of February of 2016, so it's got more than two years to go on it. Question is, if you want us to go ahead and advertise for it now, you could make the selection process most realistically in November.
And I would rather fill it now is the reason I pulled it than to hold it open until March, 'cause we've got a lot of economic development things going on. Senator Whiting?
Mr. Love was the chair, wasn't he?
Yes.
Quite a, you know, he'd been there for a few years and had some knowledge, so we need to try and fill that void. Obviously, there's many other people on that board that are knowledgeable with the things that are going on, but I'd agree with you. I think we need to try and fill that.
Senator Lehman?
Do we have any other boards and commissions that have vacancies at this time?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think so.
Trying to justify going through the whole process for one position instead of multiple positions.
We've done this multiple times through, through the year for vacancies with, there was one vacancy with the EDAC, there was-
And we may have another vacancy on EDAC upcoming, so we may have two actual vacancies, so we could advertise.
Mr. Maggio?
Member McGuire will be out for a few meetings because of family leave. So I'm curious if we have enough to have a quorum if we don't fill it?
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to fill that position, so we just need to accept with regret the resignation of Ryan Love, and direct staff to fill the open seat, if you so choose. Senator Whiting?
I'll make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ryan Love from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and direct staff to fill that position as soon as possible.
Do we have a second? Senator Heitzman, any discussion? I'd also like to thank Member Love for his, a lot of great work on the EDAC that he did. I'm sorry to see him go from that position. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number eight, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting, entertainer motion. Councilman Lehman?
Motion to recess for Economic Development Authority.
Senator Heitzman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are in recess for Economic Development. President Whiting?
I'd like to call the September 3rd meeting of the Economic Development Authority to order. Mr. Wachman, could you please take note of the roll?
Yes, Mr. President.
We have a lot of items on the business, so we're gonna take our time tonight. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Heitzman, all in favor? Any discussion with that? All right, motion passed. We have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Heitzman, is there a second?
Second, it's just a minute, right?
Just a minute. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna jump to item 4A, EDA meeting schedule. Is there a presenter?
Mr. President, as you know, right now, the official meeting for the EDA is the second city council meeting of the month. Because of the amount of economic development activity that we have had over the past few months, there have been times that we have had to delay some of the activity by a couple of weeks. We anticipate that we will continue to have, if nothing else, follow-up on actions that are already before you. What we would like to propose is to go to a bi-weekly meeting with the same meeting schedule as the city council. In other words, first and third Tuesdays of the month. If there's nothing that is, needs action, we'll just simply convene and recess the meeting.
Any questions? Hearing now, entertain a motion.
There's a resolution on the packet tonight that would need action.
Mr. Clayton?
Resolution 2013-5, authorizing a change from the regular meeting schedule of the Economic Development Authority in and for the city of Shakopee, Minnesota.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Tabkey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item 4B, authorization to enter into consulting contract with Hoyzington Cogler Group? Did I say that right?
Hoyzington Cogler Group?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yep, perfect.
Mr. Mr. Maggio?
Thank you. Prior to my arrival here at the city, I know that the city of Shakopee had applied for a TAP grant, and the TAP grant was coming, it's, the technical name is the Technical Assistance Planning Grant, known as a TAP grant. We had applied for the TAP grant to the Scott County Community Development Agency. On April 12th, 2013, we were awarded a grant for $15,000. The TAP grant funds are to be used for the county 101 marketing plan. This is actually a matching grant program, so basically, the TAP grant was for up to $15,000. The city of Shakopee needs to at a minimum put in $15,000 of our own funds. Any of the funds need to be allocated by December 31st of 2013. I know that was something that you had previously discussed, what you should do with the TAP grant if you applied for it. I think there was a couple of different options. I know in a couple of the meetings that I've been in with you, you've discussed the priority of studying the 101 corridor, what it will mean after we're done with the bridge, changes, the changes in the traffic, things like that. So what we did is, thanks to Mr. Leek, we put together a proposal, and I sent it out. We sent it out to 24 different groups. We had three groups respond to our proposal. We then invited them in. After we reviewed their proposals, as staff, Mr. Leek, Mr. McNeil, and I reviewed the proposals, we invited three of the groups in for interviews. After we did the interviews, staff is currently recommending the Hoyzington Cogler Group, HKGI. HKGI proposed to us to do the study in five different phases. The first phase is kind of an organization kickoff event. They plan to meet with staff, they plan to collect data, they plan to evaluate the characteristics of the 101 corridor, and they're gonna review any previous studies that we did. I believe when the construction was done to the 101 corridor, there were some studies done at that time. They're gonna go through and look through all that information. The second phase of it is to have a meeting between staff and between the members of the stakeholders, as we'll call them, the businesses and the residents around the 101 corridor. HKGI will invite them, they'll meet with us, they'll meet with the stakeholders, they'll find out any concerns we have, give any input of what future things they see. The third thing will be exploring the possibilities. They'll come back to us and give us different alternatives to things that the 101 corridor would best be met for. Different things in the future about what type of businesses would best be served there, what type of housing would best be there, things like that. They'll go through and review all the information. They'll also conduct a developer roundtable to invite everybody back to talk about what they found through the different studies that they've done. And at that point, we can ask them to make a revision. So if we think that they're going down a road that maybe, as a group, we don't collectively agree with, we can ask them to rework their plan at that time. The fourth phase is they're gonna actually create a draft marketing plan for us. Once they get done with that, they'll give us some implementation strategies on what we could actually do to implement this down the road. So based on, as I said, you know, maybe there'll be a phase one, a phase two, a phase three. They'll kinda break it down what their recommendations are as far as things that we could do to assist in that corridor as our population grows, as the traffic grows, things like that. Finally, they'll come to us with a marketing plan. They'll do a final presentation for you as a city council and the EDA, and then we can make any additional modifications as necessary.
Questions, Mr. Lehman?
Couple of questions. First, this was a special session tonight for this purpose, and I was wondering what the time restraint was that this had to be brought up tonight instead of our regular meeting.
Sure. This actually has, the funds have to be awarded by and used up by December 31st. So in order for them to get the process rolling, they really wanted to start meeting with us, start having meetings with our stakeholders. You know, there's gonna be a lot involved, and they wanna make sure that they have enough time to meet with anyone, as they've promised us that they will do. And this is gonna be a huge process, just reviewing past studies. They're gonna bring in someone from the East Coast, come through and review the different types of businesses that we have and find out what's there. It'll be quite a detailed process, so they definitely need this amount of time. It'll be quite a detailed process, so they definitely need this amount of time. I mean, if you think about what the work they're going to do for us, four months is not a huge amount of time.
Do we know, first of all, what's the boundaries and what is it we're looking to gain out of this?
Well, I think that's what's so great about this, is this is really going to be up to the stakeholders and up to the council and up to anyone that they come to talk to. Basically, they're going to come meet with us and find out what it is that we want to figure out. So they're going to be led by your direction and by the stakeholders' direction, and I'm excited about that, because everyone may have different ideas, but it'll be interesting when we're all in there together and we're all talking as a group, really what visions we see as a group.
Boundaries?
As far as I know, it is the one-on-one corridor, so it'll be as you come across the bridge. I've talked to them a little bit about going to the east and to the west, and so again, I think that's something that we have to be clear with them when they come to our meeting.
Are we looking at east one-on-one out to eighteen, old eighteen, I guess?
No. At this point, we were looking at intersection of eighteen and seventeen, or perhaps as far east as the bridge, to include Danger Fields and the properties to the east of kind of Marshall Road.
So where are we going off to Danger Fields?
Potentially.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Clay?
I was getting back to it.
I'll move that the EDA authorize the appropriate officials to enter into contract with Hoyzington Gogler Group Incorporated to perform the county road one-on-one marketing plan as presented.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Tabkey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. All right. Last on the agenda, Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to September seventeenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned.
All right, thank you, President Wyding. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting and move on to item number ten C one regarding sod availability. Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. I did put some letters on your, on the table, just to kind of give you a little flavor. I'll go through that of this item, and just to refresh, I need some help here. Document camera. We're talking about the twenty thirteen street reconstruction project. Most of the streets are in the presidential area. Atwood Street from ten to ninth is in that street reconstruction project. We've been informed that our contractor will not be able, is unable to get twenty thousand yards of sod that we need for the project, and there is kind of a shortage going on. There's a couple of things that are in the way here, or what has happened. Severe drought last fall, a quite wet spring and cold spring and snow late in the May has kind of reduced the amount of sod that's available, and the increased demand for sod in the metro area. So the contractor has not been able to secure sod. We are, need to get the yards restored. One option that we are looking at, we bring to your attention, is to look at perhaps going what's called a hydroseed. And I know if some of you have seen that, it, they would put the seed down with a hydromulch, so it looks like kind of a green layer of paper or whatever. It looks, it's all green when they're done, but it's, it's a, it basically would contain the seed in, into the soil and provide a cover, and it does do a fast germination. I do have representative from Char Tiling and also representative from J and R Larson, the supplier to speak on the sod issue. And the reason I, we want to talk about this is if we want to go to sod, still stay with sod, we're going to have to really go out there and see where we can find the sod in various places, and some of the sod quality may not be there. That's some of our concerns. I did check with the city of Edina. They have gone away from sod because of the complaints, of the fact that a lot of the sod does die from one year to the next, and they have gone with this hydroseed mixture. And J and R Larson has done those projects. So I'm going to let those guys speak a little bit and be ready for any questions you have at the end.
Evening, council. Tim Culp with Char Tiling. We've had a couple of projects going, and this became an issue a couple of weeks ago, both for this project and in New Prague and different contractors, but same issue. Basically, with, especially the last, say, sixty days, it's been severely warm. So knowing they, if they try to cut the sod, it basically just disintegrates, there's nothing to hold that map together. And this is a, a large sod job. You're able to find some smaller quantity of lesser quality sod at a thousand to fifteen hundred square yards, but to find a quality sod right now for up to twenty thousand square yards is next to impossible. I've called myself different suppliers and different contractors who put it down, and same success as J and R. I can't find it. Talking with Jim, we'll let him speak to what the product is, but he's had some luck in Apple Valley was another one that went to this today, were changing their method on sod, Edina last week. So it's happening in communities, and we're just trying to get the project taken care of and closed up for you. Jim?
Mayor, council members, Jim from J and R Larson. I have, I got five letters from different sod suppliers. I'm doing a five and thirteen project for Ames up in Burnsville there, and that one was a little trickier because I had a DBE supplier for disadvantage, and she couldn't fulfill the contract with me for the sod. We made it through some of that. I have a letter from her for that project. Nothing's changed for, for this project. My main supplier is Jerick, and KLM saw it out of North Branch. Lana from KLM, I talk to her every day. Nothing's changed in the last four weeks. Their drainage ditches are dry, they have pumps that they use to pump their drainage ditches, and then they have irrigation that runs on the sod fields. Well, the water table's low because it's sandy up there. And there, this afternoon, I think it was Bruce that found Magnuson sod, but when I bid this project this winter, I, I wasn't anticipating this and nobody else was, and I wasn't anticipating using small rolls. I bid it for the big rolls, and he can come up with a couple thousand yards maybe, so can this person and that person, but bottom line is twenty thousand yards is a lot of sod. And in Edina, we, we switched it all to Flex Terra, it's called. It's zero cure time, so if, if I, and the reason I did that there is because I have a lot of irrigation. So if I put this down and all of a sudden the homeowners are irrigating more than I would like them to, it's not going to wash this product away. They had a lesser product that was spec. Chad is an engineer there. We sat down, he asked me what my opinion was of type six versus this Flex Terra, which in the new spec book, it's going to be type nine. He went with my opinion, and they're pretty happy. And he relayed that to Bruce, that they, from now on, they probably won't do sod anymore. I know this is new. It would be nice to do this when we weren't under the gun, but I brought this to everybody's attention last week, and, you know, here we are.
Wait, can you have it done by?
I would start on Thursday, if not tomorrow, prepping.
And, but when would all the seed be down?
Well, I'll be right behind Char. I mean, by the end of next week possibly, I would be done with it. We did offer, well, my original letter from KLM was if it rained this weekend, we could get sod, and it, and it didn't. And that's the one I gave to Tim last Friday, and they did not get that rain that went to, like, the fairgrounds in that state fair.
We've also, in negotiations with your public works director, Mr. Looney, today, are seeing a dollar-plus savings to go with the hydromulch.
And an extra warranty period.
And, and there's extra sixty...
Of ninety days.
Yeah, total of ninety days, so, you know, I'm on the hook for an extra sixty days of warranty, plus it's a savings too, you know, ultimately, the taxpayer.
Council Lehman?
Couple of questions. When, when I did, if I have a few years back, my sod was, half of it was, was replaced. I don't know, didn't take or whatever. But the questions I have now, if we go to this, what's it called, hydroseed?
Flex Terra, yeah.
Flex Terra?
It's hydroseeding. I actually put the seed down first, it's not mixed in the tank.
Okay. Is there any, do we have to tape this off so people ain't running on it or anything?
Bruce brought that up. Alls we, alls we need is the engineer to send letters out to the homeowners, just telling them to stay off the sod. I mean, it's no different than if we lay, or the seeding, the hydroseeding. It's no different when we lay sod and, and one out of twenty homeowners mows it two days later. You're still going to have some people running around on it, but I don't think we're going to have major issues if we get letters out to them and just stating that we had a sod shortage, and this is what we're doing, please keep off of it for thirty days. Up in Edina, in two weeks, you couldn't tell that I, that there was any disturbance up there, that's how fast it grew. And we're in our prime germination right now. I guess that's why we...
We, we really do, excuse me. We, we do need, that's why we're here tonight. If we're going to do this product, you need to get on, like he says, today or tomorrow, and so we, we meet the period of time where we get the maximum germination. So that's, that's the thing with, with this whole process, will be an education process that we'll send out to the, to the residents, make sure they understand. I also feel, and I've done in my, my own experience, seeding, you do get a better turf than you do with sod. We have had problems in the past years where certain amount of sod just doesn't make it, for whatever reason, even if we have, it, it just, it's so tender that I think that's where the complaints were in Edina, they were getting so many complaints, they decided to go to this process, and their, the results so far have been, they're not going back to sod, so that's the issue.
But Mayor, it just, it just seems to me that if you can't get sod, you can't get sod.
Well, and, and I think...
That's what it is.
The sod we can get...
It's poor quality.
It's going to be poor quality.
Right.
So that's the reason, if you want a recommendation from me, I think we should go to this process. We wanted you to be informed, we didn't want to, you know, not do this without a council approval.
That's what I'm trying to do.
We need to, we need to move quickly if we're going to do this.
I'm trying to be informed, because I got a feeling that we are going to get phone calls on this from people expecting sod, and they're going to get something different, and we need to be able to tell them why they're getting this, what the benefit is.
Together, we will be making sure the residence gets educated, get a letter out. Contractor also be out there talking to people.
I'll take the free education too while you're at it.
Council Wyding? What kind of guarantee and how long is that guarantee that we're going to give our homeowners?
Well, I'm asking for a ninety-day maintenance period. That's watering, manicuring, making sure that the, we get a growth. If we don't get some areas that don't take, at least with Edina did, they have to rehydroseed at no cost. So we're going to sit there and make sure that things go, and there's some of the, and the ninety-day growing period will extend into next year, so we'll get an extra-long maintenance period.
Mr. Mayor, I've had some good luck seeding, and I've had some bad luck seeding, and come to find out that it had to do with the mix of the, the grass seeds. Too much rye, and it grows great this year, dies next year, because it's an annual. Is there a mix that you guys are recommending?
I, I put that in my letter, and, and I'm using a Min dot two seventy seed mix. There's, there's no annual rye in that. What I'm going to do, because I'm on the line for this, is I'm going to, I'm going to add some extra perennial rye that will come up in the spring. It'll have its germination this fall, and it'll be back year after year, so no annuals in this.
Thank you. Council Clay?
You said that we would be saving a dollar, but you didn't say if you meant a dollar per square inch, per square foot?
That's a dollar on the whole job, no. It's a dollar a square yard.
Square yard.
We're, we're in negotiations, it could be plus or minus, but there, there is going to be a discount.
All right, anybody have a problem with this?
One more question.
Council Lehman?
Will the, any rehydro seeding that takes place come after winter, I take it?
Yes, it would.
Yeah.
And then... And depending on the circumstance, I would recommend something than redoing that, and Bruce and I could talk about that, but it would be called slit seeding. If you had an area the size of this table, it's no use tearing that entire area up in the guy's whole front yard to get in there with the hydrocedar. I would go in with a slit ceder. It, it's power takeoff on a little tractor, and it actually slices the seed into the turf. Then I could re-hydro mulch on top of that, but...
Do our soccer fields that way.
Yeah. I think this, this really is the best scenario, based on all the factors out there, and, and again, we'll get the education part out to the residents so that they understand that we're doing this to get them a good yard. It'll take a little more time versus instant grasp, but we think in time, you'll have a better product and be happier. And one other thing we did do this year, we, we brought in topsoil that's basically from the Sioux community. We bought, we got a good deal from the topsoil there, which is higher in organic, so we have a lot of organics. We have, we think, one of the biggest complaints we always get is turf, so we take this very seriously. So we went with the extra-rich topsoil. We do think going this way will get a better product, but we do need to move quickly. So I guess if any action, it would be just to say, yes, we want, proceed as recommended by staff.
All right, so let's take a motion on that? Council Lehman? Any move forward with hydroseeding?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to direct staff to move forward with the hydroseeding on the street project and to work with the contractor on the prices and educational pieces.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same by Council Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, item number ten D one, authorization to hire four full-time firefighters. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The agenda item in front of you tonight is seeking authorization to hire four full-time firefighters. Real briefly, I'll go through the steps that we've taken to get to this point. My timeline that I have up here starts with May seventh, when the city council approved a job description and authorized posting for the four positions. Probably should begin earlier than that, as staff and the council had been discussing the need to somehow improve our daytime response speeds. For probably about a year and a half, we'd been discussing that and exploring different alternatives and things. And finally, on May seventh, came the decision that it was going to be addressed through the hiring of a daytime duty crew. The four individuals that we are in the process of hiring will work Monday through Friday, seven-thirty to three-thirty, and provide that first truck out of the station in response to daytime calls for service. Whoops. That being said, following the May seventh council action in the direction to post for both internal and external candidates, the fire chief and I spent some time reviewing testing mechanisms that are out there in the marketplace, as well as establishing our application process and setting up a timeline. We wanted to make sure that we had all of our ducks in a row, so to speak, before the posting went public. The positions were posted on June eleventh. They were advertised on the League of Minnesota Cities website, which is a far and beyond the most prominent place that cities are advertising these days for municipal jobs. Our own city website, our Facebook page, our Twitter account were used. We also advertised in the print publications of the Southwest newspapers. The application deadline was June twenty-eighth. We received two hundred and thirty applications by that deadline, two hundred and seventeen from external candidates and thirteen from internal candidates. The written exam was administered on July eighteenth. The exam that we used was a nationally tested and available-for-purchase exam by a group called IPMA HR. That's the International Public Management... That's the International Public Management Association for Human Resources. We have used their testing products in our police department as part of hiring and selection processes there in the past, although we don't currently use a written test in the police department. We invited a hundred and twenty of the two hundred and thirty applicants to take the test, and ninety-four actually showed up on one of our testing sessions. We offered it in the morning, afternoon, and evening of July eighteenth, so we offered it three different times. First-round interviews were held August fifth, sixth, and seventh. I sat on that interview panel along with Assistant Fire Chief Dave Judd. We interviewed sixty-eight candidates in three days. The people that were invited to that round were those that scored an eighty percent or higher on the written exam. Moving on from that, twenty-four candidates were invited to second-round interviews, one withdrew prior to those, so twenty-three people received a second-round interview. That interview panel consisted of Fire Chief Rick Coleman, Police Chief Jeff Tate, and Greg Hayes, who is the Director of Emergency Services and Fire Services for Shakopee, Meadowlockton Sioux Community. That is the process that led to the recommendations for this evening. Are there any questions about the process or the steps we used?
Councilwoman Heitzman?
What will the four be doing when they're not fighting fires?
There's a complete job description that was adopted on May seventh, and I'd be happy to give you that. In a nutshell, they will be doing a significantly higher level of equipment checks and maintenance on equipment and trucks than we are able to do right now with a paid-on-call staff. They will be doing pre-planning of industrial, commercial, and public facilities in the community, so that should a fire call come in for one of those more complex buildings, we will have a pre-plan in place, and people will have, and our staff will have been through that building in a calm and normal status before they arrive on an emergency scene. In addition, we plan to provide a higher level of public education than we are able to do right now, given that we don't have staff available during the day.
Will that take them out of the firehouse, though? That kinda defeats the purpose of having them.
It will take them out of the firehouse to some extent, but they will travel as a group and with the fire engine as their vehicle. So, if they have to leave the site of a pre-plan or public education, they can do so. Once they get underway, you may see them in groups of two, with two in one engine and two in another engine, so that they can be separately doing non-emergency work and meet at an emergency scene if necessary.
Other questions? Councilwoman Whiting?
First, let me say I have no concerns with the candidates or issues that you've brought forward. My intent originally was to create an unfair and unbiased hiring process, application process, and opening this possibility, opportunity to other possible candidates. And I guess I have to ask with no disrespect, and, you know, without implying any question about the panel's integrity, but I'd like to ask the chiefs and, is it Mr. Hayes? If they can just tell me, was the hiring practice fair and unbiased? That's what I'm looking for.
I'll bet leadoff. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've been a part of several interview panels, both in the police department and outside the city. I can assure you that this was a fair process. All three of us came up with the top four, there was a consensus on that. That's rare sometimes. I doubt the three of us would've agreed on what to put on top of a pizza, but we agreed on these four, and for the same reasons. And I have the utmost confidence that it was a fair and impartial process. I was proud to be a part of it.
If I can continue, am I ever gonna hear that from some other candidate, that it wasn't fair, that there was some favoritism? Is there gonna be any issues with that?
Mr. Whiting?
Hard to judge, but.
I can't assure you that you won't. At any time you do a hiring process, there are winners and losers, so to speak. We often see numerous more quality candidates or people that could do the job than we have positions open to fill. And the people that applied and maybe didn't get it, they only know how their own interview went. They didn't sit, they weren't a fly on the wall in the interviews of the people that were actually were selected. So, I can't guarantee you that there won't be complaints, that there won't be people that would have done it differently. I can guarantee you that this process was handled professionally, it was handled following the same practices and procedures we use to fill all other positions within the city. I've been doing hiring for the city for about seven and a half years now. Not one of the processes I have ever managed has been challenged legally as having anything legally or ethically wrong with the process that the city interpreted. That's what I can tell you in there.
Can I have one more question for Chief Coleman?
Please.
Your current deputy training chief, is he, how do you pronounce his name, Eternus?
Eternus.
Eternus, okay, sorry about that, Mr. Eternus. You had talked in the past about wanting to hire a training chief. Now, is this a position now, if the body decides to go through with this, is this gonna fulfill that need? Or will we be looking in the future to move this position separated and add another full-time fireman?
To answer your question, eventually, we're going to need a full-time training chief for the city. So, if we decided to go to a full-time training chief, there is a possibility that we could, we'd have to do a hiring process, just like we did for this process, to fill that position. Who got that position, we wouldn't know until that process was done, if that.
But this.
I can't take one of the four and move them there, if that's what you're asking.
But the deputy chief can't fulfill the duties of that as a full-time fireman?
No, he cannot, because he'd be a firefighter. He's been hired as a firefighter, not as a training chief.
Because I know Mr. Andrebbo is your SCBA technician.
Correct.
For your air packs. So, would he be doing some of that maintenance during the full-time shift?
That is correct, but that's, we will be getting rid of the SCBA coordinators that we already have, and some of our maintenance people that we pay part-time now, and all them job duties are transferring over to the full-time positions.
But you don't feel that would work for the training chief?
I would still have to open that position up, because it's a new position.
I see, okay.
And a training chief would be paid at a higher rate than a firefighter, so it'd have to be a new position that was opened up.
I see, thank you. Councilwoman Lehman?
And if we did fill the training chief with one of them four, the other three would be highly trained, and the rest of the department wouldn't be.
Well, yeah.
Because you gotta get the rest of them together to do it. My question is for Mr. Hayes. First, thanks for coming.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it. How many full-time firefighters do you folks have?
We have eighteen full-time firefighters, we're in three shifts, twenty-four-seven, so six on shift. We have two of us that are full-time on the administrative side, so myself as the director, an assistant director. We have an EMS coordinator and two administrative coordinators in-house.
Okay. And you're from?
I'm sorry?
Just tell the audience where you're from?
Oh, Shakopee, Meadowlockton Sioux Community, I'm the Director of Public Safety.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll make the motion to authorize the hiring of Dave Giddings, Rob Andrebbo, Joseph Simon, and Ryan Eternus as a full-time firefighter, Step E, Grade Five of the 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, subject to a successful completion of the required pre-employment background check, physical, drug test, and functional capacity exam.
Do you have a second? Senator, Councilman Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Councilwoman Lehman in dissent. Item number ten D two, appointment to hire office assistant. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a standard hiring, it is not on consent this evening, because we were still checking references when your council packet went to print on Friday. We were able to complete those reference checks this morning, and they were successful checks. Therefore, we ask that the council authorize the hiring of Ann Meyerhoff as an office assistant with the Finance Department at Step E of Grade Three of the 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, subject to successful completion of the required pre-employment, physical, drug test, and background check.
Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Lehman?
I'll make a motion to authorize a hiring of Ann Meyerhoff as an office assistant with the Finance Department, Step E, Grade Three, 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, subject to successful completion of the required pre-employment, physical, drug test, background check.
Thanks for the second. Senator Heitzman, any discussion? Councilwoman Lehman?
This is filling an existing opening?
Correct.
Not a new position?
Correct. We changed the job title slightly and the job description when the position opened, but it's in the same pay grade, in the same department, in the same physical office as the vacant position was.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Item ten F one, adoption of the 2013 proposed maximum property tax levy and preliminary general fund budget. Ms. Linehan?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you recall, and as our newly-appointed council member, Mr. Heitzman recalls, this is an action that is presented to the council and mayor every September. What I've placed in front of you is the summary chart of activities, which is typically how we prepare the council for what this process involves. I'll just do a quick overview. In July of this year, we started meeting with city staff, reviewing issues that were relative to the legislative session, changes that were made at the state, issues that were going to be a focus of the 2014 budget process, and began the work plans and the work papers for the budget presentations. As you see with the information in front of you, there's a schedule that is defined by the State of Minnesota, which is called a TNT process, or Truth in Taxation. It's a process that's changed, evolved, but it roughly stays the same each year. And what this process is, is it requires the council to adopt a proposed property tax levy by September fifteenth. That is the action that will be before you tonight. Upon that action, the council agrees that in December, there will be a final levy, a final budget, that will be presented at the public meeting. One of the changes you'll have this year, if you go down to the very bottom here, talks about the fact that in 2013, there is going to be discussions that will be presented at the December meeting, specific to sales tax exemption. That will be a part of the December meeting that has not been presented before, but that will be brought forward as staff continues to review the information from the Department of Revenue, what they're going to require, and the expectations of how the sales tax exemption will potentially create budget savings. As I've referenced before, there's still a lot of discussion going on and a lot of training that is going on at the state level, because there is a lot of interpretation of the sales tax exemption law. We can tell you that internally, we are not seeing these significant savings that were promised at that time, so it may be a very short discussion. After the council accepts the preliminary levy, the staff will continue to meet with the departments individually, and then we'll bring back individual topics related to the budget to the council during September and October. Once we bring back the final levy and it's approved by council, this will then be routed to Scott County, similar to when the preliminary levy is accepted, and that will be the final document that will be routed to the property taxpayers when they receive their parcel-specific notices. This has been a rather interesting year in the whole preparation and review of budget information. As we've referenced before, a real positive this year in the budget presentation has been the increase that the city will experience in the anticipated 2014 market growth. The number right there, four-point-eight-three percent, that is the early estimates that I think are very real of the growth after following several years of the opposite, of declining growth. That allows for a much healthier environment, not just for your community, but for your property tax levies and your budget planning. And there's your favorite chart, because I know how much fun it is to try and see this, so let's see how much we can zoom.
There we go.
Is that helping a little? Let's get that a little cleaner here. There's a couple of factors on this sheet that are really important as we discuss preliminary levies. First and foremost, this is the year the state legislature put a levy limit on. It's been several years since cities have seen this, but cities and counties will be held to the three-percent levy limit cap. That has a lot of impact on communities that have either held their levies flat, reduced their levies, or experiencing other issues that maybe don't fit the cookie-cutter approach of holding taxes flat. What we have presented forward this evening for discussion purposes, as you are aware, when a proposed levy is brought forward, that levy is the highest that can be utilized in budget planning. Your levy can always be reduced, but it cannot be raised. When we are bringing forward our recommendations for this evening's action by the council, we have brought forward a three-percent levy increase, which would increase the levy from the 2013, 2012 Collectible Thirteen levy of fifteen million three thirty-three. And what we've done is we've brought a three-percent factor in there of fifteen million seven ninety-three. This allows us an increase that will allow to provide for what were considered the significant factors in the 2014 budget planning: economic development, capital outlay, infrastructure and enhancement, and the issues related to the funding of specific positions that were added, as well as transfers for other projects that are specific to the growth and stability of this community. The interesting factor, as we look at the 2014 budget planning, is you had a tax rate at last year's levy, which resulted in a tax rate of just slightly under forty-two. Due to the growth that you are experiencing in your neck tax capacity, a three-percent levy increase results in a tax rate that is actually lower than the current year's tax rate. Because you've had that four-point-eight-percent market growth, a three-percent levy will have no increase on the tax rate. Now, I have to clarify this. If you're an individual who has a home that has market value increases or significant increases, that doesn't mean your taxes will not increase, it simply means the tax rate does not increase. Not one of the easiest concepts to put out and explain, but from a positive perspective, it's a really good environment to bring forward tax increases for the projects that you as a council have specified are your priorities in a growth market, rather than in a decline market. What we are putting in front of council this evening is we are asking for your approval of a levy increase of three percent for the collection year 2014. Now, we've just, in its kind of an unusual format this year, because the Department of Revenue is running a bit behind schedule, but we on Thursday received the levy limit confirmation from the State of Minnesota. We just got the pair of numbers today, and there's a few other numbers that are still out there, but it's coming together. It's not the easiest year to do a budget. What we are proposing for the council is, this is your levy that was increased last year after discussion. We had an initial levy in 2012 Collectible Thirteen, that was slightly higher than this, and it was pared back. What we are requesting and proposing for the upcoming levy and for the preliminary levy is a three-percent increase. We are also proposing changes to the debt levy. What I've put forward this evening for discussion and consideration, doesn't have to be determined tonight, but I'm just putting it out there. You have a 2006 A debt levy, that is a debt project for road reconstruction and some projects that were done in 'oh-five and 'oh-six. At the current time, there is no levy for this debt service. I'm proposing that the entire 2014. I'm proposing that the entire 2014 debt service commitment be levied. If this is something that, as a Council, you wish to consider, take a percentage of, or do the full amount, that is my request to you to consider. I'm also requesting that the fire building debt levy, that was a referendum levy, it went to vote, that has a levy currently this year of $150,000, increasing that to $175,000, for a total levy, because the two debt service levies here are not contingent upon levy limits. All debt services above and beyond levy limits would provide a levy of $16,312. What Council is asked to consider tonight is, what are the factors, when you consider your future upcoming year levy, what are the factors that we've talked about and brought forward into the budget discussions? One of the pieces, the market value growth. Secondly, in the 2013 budget, we allowed for several positions. What needs to happen in 2014 is there will need to be the funding of these positions for a full year. When we approved these budgets last year, we had the recognition that there was going to be costs that were going to be carried into 2014 that would need to be covered by the upcoming levy. We also have built into this levy estimates for personnel and benefits. We, at this point, do not have numbers yet on our health insurance and several other insurances. We're working only on estimates. We hope to have that data. We're hoping by, I'm hoping, October, we will have those details. The other factors that impact this budget, PERA. This was legislative action that also occurred for police departments. We do not pay, at this point, full-time fire yet, but the PERA for full-time police. There has been an increase requested on the part of the employer portion, from the rate currently of 14.4 to the increased rate of 15.3. Transfers are another significant part of your budget that is out of the general fund. The most significant is the infrastructure, as we spend a lot of time talking through the CIP plans that Mr. Looney and Mr. Wyant prepare and present to Council. There's some significant upcoming infrastructure work. Some of it's been deferred, some of it's been delayed, some of it has been presented as individuals who've approached the Council and requested action. One of the factors that impacts your CIP significantly is, even if your projects are assessed, you only pay a 30% assessment on properties here. The other 70% is picked up through the city's general levy. That levy is what provides the transfer that we're requesting for 2014, from the $500,000 this year, which is your initial year of funding the CIP, to next year's $750,000. And as we've discussed and planned before, there's going to be incremental increases as we build up that transfer to the CIP, because we're aware that the bubble is coming to the top on the projects that you will, as a community, need to face. Some of these can be funded through assessments, some through stormwater, sewer, county projects, federal aid, municipal state aid, but there is a significant portion of your infrastructure work that needs to be funded by the city. Another major key to this year's budget is the economic development process. You have, in 2013, added a position. You have funded operational costs related to EDA activities, and there's also the facade loan program that, as we discussed EDA budgets with the EDAC, this is a program that they feel can be expanded, improved, and bring a lot more to not just your downtown, but other areas of the community. So what I have before you tonight is what you traditionally see every September. I have a resolution for your consideration that allows for the 3% levy increase, the levy for the fire department building, and the debt service levy. Again, preliminary numbers, they cannot be increased after the preliminary is accepted, only decreased. And with that, I'll entertain any questions, Council, mayhem.
Councilwoman Clay.
Just wanted to ask if you could, or I could expand just a little bit, when you were talking about that bubble, capital improvement projects. The word "bubble," or "economic bubble," has such a negative connotation after the economy collapse. The bubble we're talking about is about the one that was created 20 years ago when the city went through some major growth spurts, and I forget how many miles of roads were put in in a few years, like 75?
No, it was around 70.
70 miles of roads, 20 years ago, that now are going to be in need of reconstruction, all coming and doing it in a very, very short period of time. So when we're talking about that bubble, a large part of that bubble is that large chunk of roadways that are going to need to be redone here as part of their natural cycle of maintenance.
Correct.
And along with that, that won't, for the most part, have to start to happen for a few years here, and we're putting this money aside too, so we don't, when that time comes, that those roads need to be reconstructed, that we don't have to have a significant tax increase in a few years to cover all that at one chunk. So we're putting money off to the side to help offset the needs for the future. Exactly. Exactly.
The one thing that has been, I think, very encouraging about the Shakopee infrastructure system is, there's really a good plan in place. It has a clear and a well-planned approach for the areas that you know have to be dealt with. Yes, there has been some deferrals. Yes, there has been some projects that have been pushed off. That was difficult to take in a time when you were seeing anywhere between 9% and 10% market value declines. That's difficult to bring that issue forward. As you're seeing increases and growth expansion, it does give you the opportunity to address these projects, and there is a really well-laid plan, where it involves all aspects of the infrastructure, that I think will bode very well for your community.
Further questions? No one? All right. We'll need to entertain a motion to approve the preliminary levy. Councilwoman Whiting.
Offer Resolution 7349, Adoption of the Proposed Preliminary Maximum Property Tax Levy and Move Its Adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Councilman Lehman. Any discussion? Councilman Lehman.
So this is the maximum. It can't go up, and it can only go down.
Can only go down, it cannot go up.
And the 2006A bond payment is the 70% due that year for the debt on that road project.
Correct.
Okay. We could change that at a later date if we wanted to.
If you wish to reduce that at a later time, you are welcome to consider that, and we'll discuss that in future work sessions, yes.
Councilwoman Whiting.
In regards to that, I'm very glad that you've taken a look at that, because I think that debt is a big issue that we need to attack. We've kind of let it go, we've pushed it back, we've tried to juggle things around, and some of this is based on a referendum that people voted on, saying, "Yes, tax us for this," and we haven't done it. It's hard, but you've got to pay your debts. And I think we need to do that through the tax levy, rather than trying to find money all the time. So thanks for doing that.
That being said as well, however, we paid off a lot of debt this year.
We did.
We did.
Refinanced a bunch of it.
We took care of a good chunk of it. Not to say that we don't need to continue taking care of it, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying that we used, we paid off a bunch of that throughout the course of 2013. Councilman Lehman, you have something else to say?
Well, and if you compare us with surrounding cities, the city of Shakopee is and has always been very conservative on its debt load compared to our neighbors. That's why we have the bond rating that we do, pretty frugal with the taxpayers' money.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 10 F2, Canceling Debt Service Levy for 2013-14, Resolution Number 7350. Ms. Linehan.
And, following up on this fascinating debt discussion, I promise not to use the word "bubble," because you're right, it has that connotation. One of the pieces that has been presented to you each year with your preliminary levy has also been the cancellation of debt service levies. And what I've presented before you this evening is the status of the different debt service levies that are out there. These have been confirmed by Scott County. These are the debt issuances that are currently outstanding with the city. Now, if you notice off on the side here, what you have is a maturity date. These are the years they'll fall off. And as you notice, like most good debt structures, they're laddered out, and you will start seeing the benefits as these fall off in '15, '17, future years. But what you have in front of you this evening is the actual total amount of the debt service obligation you have for 2014. It's about $1,200,000. I know the numbers you just passed a resolution on were fairly significant, but they really do not show the full picture. What you've actually got here is a levy requested with just those two levies of about $519,000. That means we're canceling the levies of $694,000. Now, to pay those off, we use collections of special assessments, we'll use cash position, we'll use fund transfers, we'll use fund position. But we do, under the structure that is established at Scott County, we will present to them a resolution that actually cancels the debt service through resolution, and that is action before you again this evening.
I like the term "juggling."
Okay. I guess it beats a shell game.
Councilwoman Lehman.
I'll make a motion, Offer Resolution 7350, Canceling Debt Service Levies for 2013-2014, as outlined, and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Councilwoman Clay. Any discussion? Councilwoman Clay.
Now, when you use the word "canceled," that doesn't necessarily mean that debt's gone.
Oh, the debt doesn't go away. It simply provides a written process to Scott County. When you issue debt, the debt papers actually flow through to Scott County, and they present to each entity, city, county. These are your debt service levies, as we have noted them through your debt issuance.
In other words, another way to say debt cancellation is, it's the debt annual payment.
Correct. The obligation will not be levied. It simply doesn't do away with the charges of principal and interest. The city will continue to pay those.
"Canceled" can be kind of a confusing word, and, I mean, most people say, you know, "I'm not canceling my car payment this month," and you say, "I'm paying my car payment this month." But basically, it means the same thing.
Correct. And there is an obligation to the bond buyers, that when you sold the debt, you would pay the debt, and that's what we do.
You can't say "deferred," like it would be a mortgage, because you're still making the payment.
Still making the payment. You're just funding it through different mechanisms.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Linehan.
Thank you. And there will be further follow-up, as we are still garnering a lot of information that's coming in significantly later this year. Department of Revenue is having a very interesting year, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to item number 11. Councilmember reports. Councilwoman Heitzman. None? All right.
It's our first meeting.
Councilwoman Clay.
I was at the Utility Commission meeting tonight. There was a couple of outages in the last few weeks, a 45-minute one on August 18th and a 20-minute one on December, or the 20th. Both of them not caused by squirrels this time, they were caused by starlings, who like to gather in groups, I guess, and if all their wings touch on the transformer wire, they, you end up shorting out the, shorting out a system and having to pick up 10 or 12 starlings.
Say, "Do we have a starling roast?"
There was a kind of a discussion at the meeting tonight, basically going over the upcoming anticipated electrical usage, or in their eyes, the sale of electricity that will be happening for Shutterfly, Compass Data Center, Data Care TE Connectivity, Emerson Rosemont, and TriStar. Basically, in a nutshell, is that we have currently enough existing capacity within our substations to handle all of this, as far as the first phases of these projects go, and there may only need to be one, one substation that needs an additional transformer somewhere down the line when the final phases of these projects get going. But they're very confident that they're pretty much in good shape to just handle things as they come without any major worries or running around in circles flailing their arms in the air.
I thought they had to put something significant in for Compass.
A couple of, two or three feeder lines in, but Compass, the companies wind up paying a pretty good percentage of the material costs for those anyway.
All right.
It's not a big financial impact on them.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman Lehman.
I'd say the power outage, one of them was pretty large, affected production of the whole downtown. Forty-five minutes, that was us. I don't have a report, other than I attended Raceway Park's last race of their history.
Me too. It was a good race.
Yeah. We won.
Nice. Councilwoman Whiting.
Thank you. Monday, August 26th, they attended the school board meeting. The board inducted eight members into the 2013 Shakopee Hall of Fame. Antonio Felix, Farmer Marshall, Justin Coffenberg, Jesse Tice, Fred Coller, Pat Pass, Burton Bonney Norderman. Congratulations to those folks. The board also added boys and girls lacrosse for the spring of 2013-14 season. The board also approved the addition of kindergarten space to five elementary school facilities. This will supply the needed space to be able to hold all-day, every-day kindergarten by 2014-15 school year. The board will be submitting the appropriate documentation to the Minnesota Department of Education to be able to leverage the most of the available state funding, but a levy increase that is not subject to a referendum will be initiated. The average $200,000 home will see an approximate increase of $24 a year. The school board held their first reading of the facility's long-range plan, including a bond referendum package. The measure passed, and the referendum will include funding for the building, security upgrades, additional fields, and other needed expenses. They'll also need to go through another reading and passing, so. Carla, anything else I need to add?
I have a question.
Sure.
The all-day, every-day kindergarten, is that like...
They get weekends off.
24/7?
Sounds like it, doesn't it? No, I think that's, well, because I think some kindergartens maybe don't go every day, but this is all day, that's the terminology they've been using.
Essentially, it's just like first grade, or they're spending a tenure, that you be in class every day for the six hours.
And I hope this works to...
So it's not all-day, every-day?
Well...
They call it that, but technically, no.
Okay. Because for 20 bucks, I mean, that's a pretty good deal if it's all-day, every-day.
Ideally, this will work on helping reduce that achievement gap and get kids learning faster and reading faster and things like that, so that's the hope. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Couple of things that I've got is, last Wednesday, took a tour of Rar Malting and Code Electric with folks from the SMSC, RAR, and also Senator Klobuchar was in town and had a very nice tour. Seeing everything they do, they'll be partially, Code Electric will be partially back online on November 1st, running on natural gas, and they're going to do a major renovation to Code Electric to help, so things don't explode anymore. And so they're going to very much redo how they store the materials and a lot of different things out there, so it was a very good tour. And then also, the intrepid reporter in the room today announced that Compass Data Centers is officially moving to Shakopee. We don't have everything all 100% in line yet with exactly where the numbers are, but they've chosen to come to Shakopee as opposed to Ames, Iowa, and they are not planning on taking the abatement that we put forward, because their project changed through the middle of the project, as well as the state put together the sales tax incentives for data centers, which really redid their business model quite a bit, so that was very helpful, and they're not going to take the abatement, which is good for us, and it is a good project all around, so that's the other thing there. And it is a good project all around, so that's the other thing there. Item number 12, any other business? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to September 17th, 2013, at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Council Heisman, do I have a second?
Thanks for lack of a second.
Seconded by Senator Lamon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously, we are adjourned at 8:47.
You talking to me? What?
Yes, oh, yes. I emailed you back, I'm not sure if the 11th works, I got four tickets to the game. Behind the plate. I'm pretty booked up that week. January. Pretty much, but...